I went home in between that.
I couldn't.
Have these been here all weekend?
What?
These, have these been here all weekend?
No, no. That's my water from last, last meeting. No, because I was here for a workshop.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
No?
It was somebody else's water.
We have round tables.
Right there on the side?
Maybe this one table, but they have round tables.
I saw Rich setting up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. For Clarence J. Knapp, Jr., a graduate of North Syracuse Central School District; for Edward F. Ceramelli, a former field band instructor for the North Syracuse Central School District; and Shirley Sutherdon Stanley, a 1947 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. First presentation is a report on the fund balance and the governor's budget. Thing that that is. Yes, he is. Well, he has to. His approval rating dropped drastically.
Because of this?
No. No. Oh, people don't care about this. They care about guns and that kind of stuff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Don. Welcome.
Tonight, we're going to, we're going to talk about our fund balance, our current reserves. We'll talk about the governor's budget proposal. Many of you have probably heard about the pension funding alternative that's available to municipalities. I thought I'd share a little bit of information about that. And then we'll just summarize with, as we have worked over the last month, kind of understand what our budget deficit is. And I'll provide a little update on that. Fund balance. So as of June 30th, 2012, that was the, our last fiscal year end. Our auditors audited our books and we had a fund balance, an on-site fund balance of $2.6 million. And as we've talked about before, the fund balance represents our savings account, our emergency money. And that's for anything that's unforeseen that might happen. And each year, when we put our budget together, we do the best we can to put together a very accurate budget. But there's always things that, that are very difficult to estimate, whether it be fuel costs or, or other, or other items in our budget that, that might be slightly off. And sometimes we end up with a situation where we spend less than we actually include in our budget. And to the extent that we do, that money goes into our fund balance. And then each year, we take some portion of that fund balance and we appropriate it toward the next year's budget. So just looking at the slide here, there's a funds appropriated to reduce the tax levy of $750,000. That's how much money we agreed to spend of our fund balance during last year's budget cycle that's being spent this year. And so we have a $2.6 million fund balance. Our budget for this year is $138.7 million. Our fund balance represents about 1.9% of our budget. That's, that's a little on the low side. The state allows school districts to keep as much as 4% in its fund balance. So roughly double that would be an ideal fund balance. And many districts heading into the financial crisis had more in their fund balance than North Syracuse. And, and as a result, they've been able to spend at higher levels than we have. Last year's budget, we appropriated 1.6 million. And so this year, we're appropriating a little bit less because we have less of a fund balance to work with. Looking forward, we start with our 2.6 million. As we think about what's it going to look like on June 30th of 2013, we start with the $2.6 million. And I'm estimating right now that we're not going to have a favorable spending variance. And, and let me explain that. As we've made budget cuts as a district over the last several years, we've tightened up our budgeting that much more. And so there's not, I hate to, there's no other way to say it. There's not as much fat in our budget maybe as there might have been in the past years. And so we, I'm estimating that our variance will be zero. It's early yet, but, but that's, that's the latest estimate. As a result of that, I'm recommending, and again, no action required here, just as food for thought as we embark on the budget process, that we appropriate only $600,000 of the fund balance toward the 2013-14 budget, which would leave us at June 30th with a $2 million fund balance. Obviously, something less than 1.9% of our, of our budget. So that's, that's the fund balance and where we stand as of now and what I project it to be in June.
Let me, that 2 point.
Yep.
That is not including approximately $900,000.
That's, that's correct. We have, we have, every year, we encumber funds at the end of the year. And so we actually have in our budget a certain amount of money that, to be. And so if you look flash forward and we looked at this slide next year, what might end up happening is that the amount to be encumbered would equal the estimated variance, and that's why it's zero. Out for the purposes of this slide. Just for people's benefit, what encumbered funds means are things that we've agreed to spend money on in a particular budget year that we just haven't sent the check out yet. And so it's kind of like an accrual. And so I didn't, I didn't bother getting into the accrual as I estimated the 2013 amount.
I just didn't know if that would be $900,000.
No, I think, I think, I think that amount is already budgeted and, and that amount will, is going to be part of the reason why we're going to have a zero. Looking at the status of our reserves, jumping to that, we have, we have a series of reserves that are very specific in their purpose. And I'd like to go through those each with you. We have a debt service reserve. And over the years, as the community has approved various capital projects, money has been put in a debt service reserve in order to cover a portion of the project costs or the debt associated with the project costs, the local share. And that debt service represents a couple of years' worth of money that we'll bring into the budget every year. This year, we brought in about $500,000. We'll, we'll do about the same next year. And we'll pay down that debt service reserve. The bad news is we don't have any, because we're, we're spending, our budgets are so tight, we don't have money to restore the debt service reserve. So over the next four or five years, the debt service reserve will be paid down based on debt we've already incurred and have to pay over that period of time. The tax surceary reserve, as you guys or you folks are aware, many people in this economy have reevaluated their tax bills and, and they protest their tax bills. And we, we sometimes end up with a situation where an individual or a business gets their tax assessment lowered and therefore their tax bill lowered. Well, we've already sent our tax bills out, so we would be short that amount of money. And so we have $300,000 established to cover any shortfalls in real estate or school taxes that are not paid as a result of tax surceary matters.
At that tax rate.
Good, good point. Exactly. We, those assessments, those assessments are not the purview of, of the public school. Every town has their own assessor. And we're just kind of bystanders in that process. And as people contest their assessments, we end up, it has implications on our ability to collect our, our school taxes that have already been levied. We use those assessments, as everybody knows, to take our local share of, of our, of our property taxes. We take our school taxes and we spread that over the assessed value. And so if after we levy it, the assessment changes, we end up with a shortfall in our budget and the tax surceary reserve is intended to cover that. The liability reserve is a very general reserve designed to cover things like deductibles. If we had an insurance claim that had a shortfall of a deductible, maybe there was some liability that the district had that wasn't covered by insurance, we would dip into the liability reserve. $41,500 for a district our size is quite a small liability reserve. The athletic complex reserve is specifically relates to the athletic turf. The purpose of that reserve is to cover the local share of a, any capital project around replacing the turf at CNS. And that money was, was put aside for that purpose. It hasn't grown or hasn't diminished and it'll be used when, when we replace the turf, which is coming to the end of its useful life. The workman's compensation reserve is used to cover, we are self-insured for workman's compensation. Let me start with that. So anytime we pay workman's comp claims, they're part of our budget. But to the extent that we have a large workman's comp claim, we need to draw on our reserve. And every year, our administrator, our outside third-party administrator does a detailed analysis of our workman's comp claim and estimates the potential liability. You may remember this summer, we increased this reserve by $150,000 in an attempt to get the reserve up to the levels recommended by our administrator. So the current status of reserves in total is about $3.8 million. The reason I belabor these points about the specific purpose of these reserves is that this $3.8 million is spoken for, for very specific, those five specific purposes and not available to us to subsidize our operating budget. Any questions on the reserves?
I just wanted to, where were we last year? If this was January 31st, 2012, what was the?
Great, great question. We were $150,000 less in the workman's compensation reserve. Any other questions, Kay?
Your microphone, please. Thank you.
Athletic complex. How many years has that money been there?
You know, I don't know the answer to that.
Since it was inceptioned, the first year that the stadium was built, it went in there. And a certain amount went in every year for the first 10 years of the contract. And that was set aside so that when the turf met its useful life, that we'd have enough money to put the turf and the track in.
The local share.
For the local share.
The district's done a great, just as an aside, the district's done a great job of maintaining that turf because we've really gotten.
Well, they, we wanted to replace it three years ago, but the state.
It's not adable.
Said it's not going to be adable because it wasn't 15 years old. So we have to wait until it's 15 years old.
I'm not done.
I'm not done either.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I want, I want to know how this, I want to know how this $300,000 got in there. Each year, I want you to tell me. And I want to, I want to know what happened. Did we not get interest on this money? We just got it sit in the cellar? I, I'm trying to figure this out in my head as to why this has not grown.
Count hasn't grown.
Well, I mean, this is a long time.
It, it was put in there $10,000 at a time, I believe.
It's the Coca-Cola?
Through Coca-Cola.
I want to, I want to just.
And there was a certain amount put away the first year and then $10,000 a year for the life of the contract, the first contract. And then after the first 10 years, it didn't, they didn't put any more in there.
No, you're right. School took it, yes.
And then I would imagine, Kay, at the interest rates that, that the last five or six years, it, it hasn't earned very, very much.
And I didn't mean, I didn't mean to imply that it's never grown.
No, no, but not very much.
The interest rates are very low that we're receiving on our money.
I mean, I think the interest rates, what are we getting, Don? A percent, maybe?
Less, less than 1%.
Less than 1%.
Would you look up, must have it someplace on your computer, what it was?
Sure, I can give you history. I'll give you a little history of it.
I don't know how, we're, we're, I want to, I want accounting of that. I'm not worried about the other stuff. I want to know about that. Because it seems to me there should be much more money than that. Beverage thing because. That's got nothing to do with this.
That does.
Yeah, it does. That's where the money comes.
Because they put, that's where the money comes from, from the beverage contract.
This one here, I thought you kept the money now. The district keeps the money. Oh, yeah.
No, no, no. They're supposed to give us a certain, it's a much smaller amount.
Can you?
Yeah, I'll go back into you bet. I'll do the research on it and circle back to the board.
Because that was part of how we got the million dollars. They, we got a check for 900 and something thousand and then $10,000 a year for 10 years to make up the other 100,000 to give us the million, that they were, that they committed to us.
You might have a better mind. I'm telling you, it got, it quit. But okay, we'll see.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the research.
You can find that. We've got all that information.
Yeah, you bet.
That's all I'm asking.
Any other questions? Preferably not as hard as that one.
Well, hopefully, we, we should be coming up on the 15 years very soon, I think.
Yeah, we are. We absolutely are.
We're working on that, right?
Yep, we are.
Okay.
It'll be, okay, so, so moving right along to the governor's proposed budget. So what we've tried to do here is, is, is lay out for you the change in aid year over year. So the state aid excluding building aid in the budget, in the, in the governor's budget is $48.9 million. Now, when the governor does their budget, they, they operate on the best information they have available to them relative to our aids. And one of the aids that is, that lags behind is a thing called excess cost aid. And that's primarily the aid associated with our special needs population, special ed population. And, and there are stack forms that the school district prepares that they submit to state ed. And there's just a backlog of processing at state ed of those things. It's not that anybody's doing anything wrong. It just takes time to process them. And our aid, as per the governor's run, is about $1.5 million less than it was this year, only because of that timing lag. So I'm adjusting the governor's state aid by that amount, which is appropriate. I've conferred with others on this to make sure they're not making the right adjustment. So our state aid excluding building aid for the 13-14 year is going to be 50.4 million. This year, our final approved state aid was 49.1 million. So it's about $1.3 million more or about 2.6%. I had estimated that we have about a 3% increase. Now, there are a number, as you folks well know, there's probably a dozen components to our state aid. And it's quite possible we get a nominal amount more than $1,300,000, but it should not be significantly more than, more than that. And therefore, we're estimating that it'll be about $1,300,000 greater than it was last year. On the building aid side, per the executive budget proposal, we're going to get $8.1 million in building aid. Our final approved building aid last year was $9.2 million. However, that included two years' worth of building aid on Smith Road. We're only going to get one year, which is appropriate, this year. So that's about a million dollar reduction. And that's what we had estimated in our preliminary numbers that we shared with you.
Just want to just reiterate, based on the fact that the state, although they say they're giving us an aid increase this year, I just want to remind everyone that for the last four years, that the state has cut approximately $11 billion in aid to school districts. So it, to use Sandy's analogy, they said they were going to give us $10 a week and they told us they're going to give us $8 a week. And when we said, "That's not $10," they said, "Well, you're going to take $8 and you're going to like it." So you go over these certain number of years and you don't get the $10 and then they say, "We're going to give you a quarter." You know, we're not, they, they cut $11 billion of aid from, from schools in New York State over the last three or four years. And the small increases that they're talking about don't even come close to making up for all of that.
Also have not reached the aid. With this. Are not at the level we were four years ago. And foundation aid has been frozen. That means that if you have more students move into your. Have additional. And dates. Have to make do with that foundation aid that.
Throw that out there. For those watching in the audience.
I mentioned, I mentioned that the, and you guys are aware that there are, there's an opportunity to assist municipalities with the funding of their pension liability. And I know there's a lot of text on this slide, but the, the governor's proposal includes a stable rate pension contribution option. And the concept there is that with the economy the way it's been the last several years, we've seen a significant increase in our pension contribution rates. I will add that the teacher's retirement system, for example, is a fully funded plan. Assets are very well managed. But with the stock market performance recently, and I mean recently as in the five-year trend, we've seen a significant increase in the contribution rate for that fund. So much so that districts are having trouble making those contributions and fitting them into their budget. So the governor came up with a proposal. I'll use TRS as an example. Our TRS rate, we were estimating it was going to go as high as 16.5%. Couple hours ago, I got an email that indicated that our state ed would like us to use 16 and 1/4, 16.25% as the rate. And, but the proposal that the governor has in his stable rate pension contribution plan is 12.5%. So that's a significant difference. The, the downside is that ultimately, we have to pay what it costs to cover the pension so that we're pushing that money down the road and we'll pay a higher rate over ti, not, not, we'll pay, we have to, we can't get away with that, without paying that amount. So that amount will be pushed down the road. And when the economy recovers and the normal funding rates decline, our rate will stay up because we have to pay back the amounts that, if we chose this program, that we didn't pay in the coming year. On the ERS side, the rate currently for ERS is 20.8%. And under the governor's proposal, the, that rate would be 12%. These two, this opportunity would represent about $3 million of deferred costs. We, we would push that $3 million into the future as opposed to paying it today. I would be remiss if I didn't bring this to you. There's a lot more research to be done. We're going to talk to a lot of people about this, make sure we understand it. But it's such a large number and given our projected deficit, I just felt, or we felt that it was appropriate to, to bring this to you, something that, that we should, we should talk about.
I had when I saw that, first, we don't want to be stuck with a balloon payment. Insurance that in year five, we're not going to be stuck with some inordinate. Gap elimination. Supposed to go away, other things are supposed to go away. They're not going away anytime soon. Other question that I would have would be, is there a point when? Would kick in that perhaps this rate could be extended at? Or?
You know, and that's some of the questions. We've got a lot more research to do on this. I don't think this plan contemplates a balloon payment. But what it does contemplate is that over time, as the market stabilizes, we'll need to pay a higher-than-market rate at some point in the future to deal with the fact we got to pay a lower-than-market rate today. And, and so.
I understand that.
It's a long tail, I think.
Pay me now or pay me late.
I'm hoping that it's not going to, you know.
We got to pay it.
We've got a lot of, we've had a lot of unpleasant surprises over the last five years, shall we say. And, you know.
We always prided ourselves on the fact that even though the state was requiring school districts to pay minimal amounts, we always paid what we needed to pay. And we're current so that we wouldn't have to worry about a balloon payment or, or any, you know. So I don't know.
Got forced into, into bonding our buses when we had all paid for them, bought them. We got forced into extending our debt. Always paid things. Do and. Showed kind of thing and, and I agree with you. I mean, you look at $3 million when you have a seven, you know, plus million dollar gap there and it looks very. Right, we need to look into it. Fight us.
Food for thought, anyway. And obviously, we don't need to make any decision on this yet, but it's something we should.
Well, you'll keep us up on the, on any, anything that you find out and any new information.
Bet. The, the next slide is simply a summary. And before we dive into the numbers, let me just say this, that as you know, it's our intention to present to the board and the public an initial budget on February 25th. We're going to continue to do all the research and, and sharpen our pencils as we come down the stretch. But as we reported in early January, some of these big moving pieces were apparent to us and we felt back then it was important to share with you. We just want to reiterate today that, give or take, this is, this is a slide from, from a previous presentation. Give or take, this is about the potential deficit that we're dealing with. And I, with some rounding here, we got a state aid deficit of about 3%. Actually, we just talked, it's about 2.6%. A state aid increase of 2.6%. It's about $1.4 million. The tax levy at the tax cap would give us about $2 million. Those are the pluses. We're still going to lose some sales tax due to the Anandaga County Sales Tax Sharing Agreement. I'm recommending that we use less fund balance. When we use less fund balance, we've got to make that money up somewhere, so that's, that's a drag as well. And we, and as you saw from an earlier slide, there's a $1.1 million reduction in our building aid as a result of only getting one year of Smith Road versus two. So our total revenue next year will go up 2.6 million. The big increases come from our health insurance going up about 10%. That's $2.3 million. Our ERS retirement, if we do not do the deferral plan we just spoke about, that would be between ERS and TRS about $3 million. Point, or $600,000 on ERS and 2.4 million on TRS. Our employees took a 0% this past, this year. And next year, they're projected to have, based on our labor agreements, about a 1% increase, which is $600,000. We've got some positions we hired at the beginning of this year that weren't in our budget. And so that's the net impact of those that we have to consider as we budget for next year. We've got some debt service increases and BOSI's increases. And so our total expenditures are going about $7.7 million. So that's how we get to our $5.1 million of potential cuts or deficit that we need to talk about. And I think this will be an interesting budget season for us. We're going to have our most detailed discussion starting on February 25th and leading up to the adoption by the board on April 22nd. So a lot, a lot to discuss. This, think of this as kind of the starting line.
A comment. If you look on the left-hand side of that slide, just for the audience purposes, state aid means that approximately we'll get $1.4 million. But we have to go to your parents and the taxpayers if we go at the tax cap that we're allowed and, and ask for 2.7 million. At one time, many, many years ago, it wasn't quite the other way, but the state would give us the money. So what we're doing is going out and asking your parents for almost double what the state is, is going to give, give us. And that's unfortunate. My question is, where were we last year? I think I asked you this before and I've lost it.
About 9 million.
About 9 million.
The process started last year. We had a $9 million deficit.
So we're looking at 5.1. Do you foresee coming back on February 25th? This is like looking into the future. Coming back with a lower amount before you give us that budget? Or do you think it's going to be approximately 5.1, based on this that you've given us?
It's too early for me to answer that question.
Okay.
I think we need to, we need to develop that initial budget and.
But we were able to start at 9.1 million and kind of whittle it down.
Yeah, a couple of things, a couple of things happened last year, though, that the 9.1, to be fair, was before the tax levy. I've put the tax levy in at 2.7, which lowered the, which lowered the difference, assuming the tax cap. The, the initial budget, these are the major cost and revenue drivers that'll, that'll be present in the initial budget. But there's a lot more to be discussed at the cabinet level and, and we'll, we'll work to put that together for you.
And so really, as Donald said, this is the starting line. We wanted to.
We wanted to at least paint the picture of where we are. And then with upcoming budget discussions, it's going to be looking at programmatic changes. What are some of the recommendations? We're really doing all of that legwork to be able to start having those discussions with the board.
But our starting point is a little bit lower than it was last year. My other concern, and Mrs. DeBianco brought this up last time, was the BOSI's, 1.2 million. And I know she asked us to really look at the programs that are over there, and I know you're doing that, because that's a large increase.
Go ahead, Scott.
In a nutshell, what's your reason for the 10 percent health insurance increase?
We work very closely with, with PomCo. Just for the audience's benefit, we have a self-insurance plan for our health benefits. And we, that means that our entire pool of self-insured employees are in this pool. And we basically pay the actual cost of healthcare for our employees, plus a small administrative fee to the administrator. And based on the healthcare trends that our administrators saw, they've told us that a 10 percent increase is appropriate for us to be thinking about when we do our. So it's a combination of our own spending trends in conjunction with the national trends on the cost for different services that our employees are receiving.
Private insurance and what many have sustained. So if 10 percent is what we're for, private industry and whatever, the federal plans, because I, now I'm an old person, so I have, but, you know, their increase this year, the.
There's a lot of private industry that are going with high deductible plans slash HSAs where, where the coverage is, well, the coverage is similar, but, you know, they're, they're pushing the burden more on the employee to manage, manage the healthcare. And in some instances, in private industry, they go to that plan and they make you fund it yourself, and others, they, they, they contribute to the, and it's just, you know, it's unfortunate. But I know that, that since we went to self-insurance and started to self-insure, that we were very in tune to how it's used and the claims. And I can't even imagine what the costs would be had we not, not did what we did, so.
I think our Health Oversight Committee does a nice job of monitoring the activities of our, of our healthcare administrator. Further, you know, the introduction of mail-order drugs recently, generic drugs, you know, in conjunction with, I think, you know, some very good management by our partners at ProAct on the prescription side and PomCo. You know, I think we're doing everything we possibly can to manage our costs down as low as possible. And again, that health insurance is just an estimate, but it's founded in, in data that was provided to our buyer administrator. We've got some time, obviously, between, to see how our claims mature and how actual spending matures between now and April 22nd, when we adopt the budget.
All right, Kay.
Where is the aid?
Oh, oh, that's not, we didn't lose any money.
Yeah, we didn't lose.
We didn't lose any money. The plan was filed on time, and.
Lost it. Is it in here already?
Yeah, we, we didn't have, we don't, we're not showing any, any loss of aid as a result of not completing our APPR.
Yeah, that was supposed to come out of the, one of the main aids.
No. What I think Kay is asking is additional funds. Are there additional funds coming?
Oh, no, there's no additional.
There are no.
We would have gotten caught.
Right, yes, yes, exactly.
We would have been down 4.7.
We would have been down nine.
Yes, right, exactly.
Okay, so it was 3.7 million?
It would have been, we would have lost 4.7 million.
So we would have been looking 8.8 million dollars is what we would be short.
And I know Bob's going to talk about this, but I have to know this. Did the governor take away the money at all-day kindergarten?
No, oh, absolutely not. The full-day kindergarten conversion aid is still in place.
That would be how much for us? 3.9 million? Yes?
You know, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I haven't updated my analysis.
No, but it would only be for the first year.
They pay, they pay two years and one year.
And they don't give it to you.
I understand that, but it's a 3.9 million?
I don't know what it is.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's a, it's a decent amount of money to cover the cost of full, of the additional cost for the next two years. Oh, yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
I think this is probably the time, and they're not called grants, but the governor has set aside some money again. Am I correct? For things like full-time, preschool, pre-K. Are we looking to apply for any of those in the school district?
As we look at what, as we begin to have the conversation around.
Like longer school day.
Right, facilities planning.
Okay.
And what the future of North Syracuse looks like, we will be engaging in that conversation.
But don't we have to get them, isn't there a timeline that you need to get them in?
If we're going to be applying for additional dollars, for example, the big-ticket item that you're referring to, we will, do not plan to miss the deadlines.
Okay.
So that is part of our conversation.
But is, I guess I asked Dan also, was this money taken away like he did last year? He took it away from the, the money coming to schools? He set aside some money?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's his, that's his shell.
Not new dollars.
It's just moving dollars around.
Right, so it's money we could have.
Took it out of a pot and put it into separate.
And I would be interested about the, the getting the aid for universal pre-K because we can't spend budgeted money that, that we get. We have, that's from the county, you know.
It has to be all-day, no, from the county is our EEP program.
Right.
But, and I was going to suggest the same thing that I think you're going to suggest.
I know, if that's something they can do.
To look into, if, if we were to, right now, we have space at Main Street, okay? If, if we were to apply for grant for all-day pre-K, it could probably be housed at Main Street at this point and might, if we talk together, be a possibility to have a, an all-day pre-K class there that might be funded under. Maybe that's something that we should look at, because one of the issues with putting the half-day pre-Ks there, difference in the schedule and our busing issues. But perhaps if there is this option for all-day pre-K grant money.
Donna Marie is our grant person who's continuously looking at grants that are being sent. That and get back to the board.
Don, thank you. We have no comments from the audience this evening. Do we have any board committee reports?
Just, we, we have a policy committee on Valentine's Day. How, how exciting. We will, we will have a policy that we should all love each other.
I thought it was the 11th, Monday, the 11th.
It is the 11th.
So pre-Valentine.
I have, I have.
Pre-Valentine.
Pre-Valentine. I, I actually, I, you're right, it is the 11th. Pardon the jam. I have a policy committee meeting, not for, not for North Syracuse, for another board on, on the, but we have a policy committee on the 11th, and we will be sharing several policies, and we'll be able to submit the concussion policy for adoption. God bless America. It's like the great unfinished symphony.
I just wanted to mention, our legislative breakfast is this Saturday, where we get an opportunity to meet our legislators, including Senator DeFrancisco and Velasquez and Alsterpe. And we have two students going from the high school, which I think is magnificent, so they get to see and speak to the legislators. I also want to tell the whole board that I've ordered postcards, so we'll have postcards down the road to send to our legislators. And I will also be sending information, how you can send it, quick email to your legislator. And I got a response back today within an hour from a legislator. So more information to support our budget.
One other thing I was fortunate this afternoon, along with Dr. Dice, to great work that our people in the LENS program are doing. And they presented some, selected in terms of our professional development plan, L survey, we selected data from our teachers about their needs and wants in terms of staff.
Good job.
Productive meeting, great insights, and.
Any else, any other comments? Hey, Dr. Dice.
See, I didn't take anything away today.
See, there you go.
Ms. DeBianco.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, good, I'm not in trouble.
But, oh, well.
I just wanted to say thank you to the LENS group for their presentation. Today's presentation was on professional development. This was one of three. Our last one was on our parent university initiative, and our first one was on networking and the different types of tools that teachers can use to engage in conversation around teaching and learning. And every presentation and focus that has been presented on is something that the group reviewed the strategic plan and then pulled something that they thought would be of value to our district. So we're excited about the work. We're also excited about the next phase, which is rollout and implementation. We're also excited about the fact that we will be embarking on our budget process, embarking on the budget process. Donald, as you can see, gave a great presentation. We've begun our conversation with our principals and our directors and department chairs around program evaluation and looking at what are some of the things that we're doing great and what are some of the things that we need to change. So we look forward to engaging in that conversation with the board and the community so that we can put forth a budget that everyone can support.
Routine action items, are there any questions or comments on those? Can I have a motion to take them as a group? Bob, second. Michael Dinoffrio, recommended action is to approve A, B, and C as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous. Discussion action item A is the acknowledgement of a gift. Laptop anymore. I left it home. I didn't get a chance to go home after work today. The WYNIT, Winnet Distribution LLC.
I was just going to say that, that's Winnet.
Winnet.
Our neighbor down the road here on Taff Road, my former employer. They generously donated a $2,500 Zebra printer as part of our security initiative. As everybody knows, we print these ID cards. Our printer was coming at the end of the life, and they came forward and gave us a new one. So we can print these, these cards easier and more effectively.
How nice. Is there your association with them?
As, as I've said in the past, it's very difficult to do the things that we do considering the fact that we are, we are on tight budget strings and, and we do spend the money as budgeted, and we try to do the best we can with the funds that we have. And it's always helpful when groups, individuals, businesses give us PTOs and so on, give us gifts like this. So the recommended action is to accept with gratitude the gift of a Zebra printer from Winnet Distribution LLC valued at $2,500. Scott, first. Second. Michael Marizio, all in favor? That's unanimous. Item B is the Anadaga Cortland Madison BOSI's member, board member nominations. I just want to update on the gentleman's agreement because that was an issue that was mentioned earlier in the year, late in last year. I served on the committee that met. The agreement was drafted many years ago, and it was a gentleman's agreement, only binding if all of the 23 component school districts agreed. We had a school district, in, in a nutshell, the, the top five school districts got permanent seats on the board, and then the other school districts were put in groups, and then each group had a representative, and they were supposed to alternate. And, and we had a group that wanted to have a member on the school district, on the, on the board. So we met to try to recast or see if we would change or keep the agreement the same. As it turns out, after three meetings and much deliberation, the group that wanted a position on the board said that they would honor the agreement and that they would wait until the next election or time that, that those board members in their group come up for election, and they would post at that point, which leads us to this item. There's a nomination. Recommended action is to nominate, the slate, well, the slate of, of potential candidates are, are as follows. Catherine Sifareta-Braiton representing the North Syracuse Central School District. Roseanne Dubrava representing the Cincinnatus School District, the Marathon Central School District, and the McGraw School District. Mark Gilbert representing DeRider, Casanova, and Chittango. And David Peskowsky representing West Genesee School District. So I would make a motion that we nominate these four individuals.
Just nominate Catherine.
Oh, just nominate one, I'm sorry.
Roseanne is not.
Roseanne is not, okay. So my rec, well, that would make an opening on the board, so. They would, see, now, under the gentleman's agreement, then if, if Roseanne represents, which district is she from, Catherine?
I'm going to say she represents.
So, well, we'll say that Roseanne represents McGraw. Then if Roseanne isn't going to run, then it would be the next in line, either Cincinnatus or Marathon would post a candidate from their school district.
Right, absolutely.
So in our case, we're going to, the recommended action is to nominate Catherine Sifareta-Braiton to represent North Syracuse Central School District.
Whoever you are.
I will make that motion. I need a second. Scott, all in favor?
Can I vote?
Yes, you can vote for yourself, yes. The same, like in a school district, you can vote for yourself.
This is much a hard time as a day I do here.
What's that?
Especially for Connie with this. Anything.
But, but again, you know, that, that's a, I, I have to say that the Fayetteville Manalius School District opted to, to honor the gentleman's agreement, which, which kind of, it's something that for 25 years has, has kind of co-existed and worked, and it's good that they decided to follow and go along with it. Okay.
Thank you.
Item C is the non-resident health and welfare rates. Don?
I can comment on that. As, as you folks know, public schools are required to provide health and welfare services to their students that attend the parochial schools in the area. And North Syracuse provides those health and welfare services for a number of parochial schools within our district. We bill neighboring districts for those health and welfare services for the students from their district that attend parochial schools, districts within, or parochial schools within our district. And so this is simply the rates upon which we're going to be billing them. They've been calculated consistent with how they've been calculated in the past, and we asked the board to.
Any questions on those?
Recommended action is be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the establishment of the 2000. of the 2012, 2013 health and welfare services rate at $448.35 per pupil. Michael Marizio, second. Bob, all in favor? That's unanimous. Similarly, Don, the tuition, the non-resident tuition rates...
Yeah, as you know, we don't have an open enrollment policy, so this is not the rate at which anybody can come to North Syracuse, but it's not unusual for there to be children attending our district that are designated as students of another district because of maybe a social services program. They're living with a, with another family, and so they'll be attending North Syracuse, but we would bill back their home district, the cost of the tuition as outlined in this, this document. And again, those rates have been calculated consistently with how they have been in the past and according to guidelines provided by the Commissioner of Education.
Questions? Go ahead, Bob.
Again, I'm not intelligent on this. We're approving the rates for this year, 2012, 2013, or are we approving 2013, 14?
These actually are the rates for this year. We haven't done our billing yet.
We haven't, okay.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Good question. Any other questions?
Well, my, my question is, we, it costs us more than this to educate. The, the state is telling us that we can't charge the full expense?
Yeah, these, these are, these are the rates that, that we're allowed to charge in accordance with the Commissioner's regulation on it.
Our, our district has a deal at its normal rate, and this is substantially less than that.
There's state aid that also comes in, so this would be like the local share of, of what it costs to educate a pupil, or in these different levels.
That makes more sense to me, okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Catherine.
Let me ask, because even though I don't want...
Then why would you ask it if you don't want to ask it?
Because it bothers me, every day it bothers me. The homeless kids that we have here in North Syracuse School District...
Federal aid McKinley, it's a big part of the McKinley-Ventow Act.
So, we do get reimbursed? Okay. Even if we had to pay...
Recommended action is to approve that resolution. Sandy, second. Michael D'Onofrio, all in favor? That's unanimous also. I was going to touch, I was going to touch. It's not going to work with this one. Next item is the termination of the Northern Anadaga Youth Sports Committee. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, the...
It's your show tonight, Don.
The Northern Anadaga Youth Sports Committee has done, has done wonderful work out at the Gillette Road Athletic Complex in terms of providing opportunities for our athletes to play primarily softball and some baseball out there in the summer. And the organization, though, has, its members have moved on to bigger and better things, and the organization has become somewhat inactive, and it's a perfect time for the district to just treat those facilities just like any other facility. We'll take them under our charge and, and manage them. And we've already spoken to the leading member of the Northern Anadaga Youth Sports Committee, and they've agreed that termination is appropriate. And the letter that was attached to the board documents would be, if you're, upon your approval, would be sent to them, and in connection with that, we'd be asking them to remit to us any funds that they have that were collected and associated with that, association with that field, so that we can pour them back into our athletic programs here at North Syracuse.
Questions on it?
Do you have any idea how much money that is?
I think it's about $4,500 in their account.
So, we always kind of controlled our fields there, but they were kind of the guiding force, so this brings it right back to us where it should have been all the time.
Question, you know, that, that I have, will still have the same arrangement with the groups who, in terms of the concessions and stand and stuff?
Exactly. We're going to, we're going to, Tim has been working with the various coaches that have run programs there. We want to have continuity of program for the kids. It's been, like I said, it's been a great, great arrangement and a great opportunity for kids, and Tim is going to shepherd that, take that under his wing so that we run that program and, and do a good job for the kids there. And so, things like concessions and, and...
And our kids will still get first dibs on the field and then the...
Oh, we control, we control.
I know that. Well, I mean, and that's...
Yes.
You know, that's... I just want to ensure that that's...
Anything else?
Recommended action is to terminate the agreement between the Northern Anadaga Youth Sports Committee and the North Syracuse Central District as stated in Section 8.01 of the agreement. Sandy, second. George, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items? A and B? Nope. Motion to take them as a group? Bob and Sandy are going to, recommended action is to approve A and acknowledge B as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous also. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the Director's Bargaining Unit to review one legal matter relative to potential litigation, maybe? Okay. And to review the employment record of two individuals with no action to follow. Second? Scott, all, all in favor? That's unanimous. We're adjourned, and come on up, guys. We'll sign your forms for you.
And Syracuse has had...
They gotta win, they gotta win this game.
They gotta win, it's important, baby.
They gotta win this game.
But it didn't take you away from my work here.
No, not at all.
Yep. Anybody?
So, what we'll do is, we'll see what his enrollment is. He's going to know.
Well, they all want Dr. ...
That's what I offered. I said, oh, you want large group structure, we're going to, we're going to have 90 people or something. He said, I think we're going to have more people.
You can come around to anybody at the table, guys.
Let me start with...
Anybody, come up to any one of us. Any one of us.
Hey, how are you? So, what was your favorite presentation?
Come inside.
The budget one, right?
Come on up, we'll sign it for you.
I've never signed a form like this, but it looks, looks good.
We've got 10 chairs, no waiting.
All right, I'll put my name in writing.
So, do you prefer Canon, prefer an Nikon? Me too. I'm an Nikon person. My wife is a Nikon person.
There you go. Have a good night, we'll see you.
And honestly, I don't, I don't really want...
Senior, you okay? What did you do?
Dealing with files.
So...